The Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
And Mrs. Yarco.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Before we go on to our report from our city manager, just a reminder that we are operating under the CDC's new guidelines, which if you have been fully vaccinated, you are free to remove your mask. And if you are moving about to come to speak at the podium, don't need to wear a mask either when you're sitting seated or when you're at the microphone. We do ask that you be mindful about the microphone. There are wipes there if you would like to use them. If you haven't been fully vaccinated, we ask that you please do keep your mask on. With that, Mr. Vanderpoel, city manager's report. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First, I'm really pleased to inform everyone of the exciting activity going on across the street. Starting today, we have Takeout Tuesdays at Dodge Park, which continues all summer. And that begins, well, it started today and runs through August 31st. So that's every Tuesday from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And there'll be a rotation of two to three food trucks onsite with food options to go. And I noticed, driving in tonight, there were quite a few people lined up at the food trucks, so already partaking in this new event that we've added for this summer. And then, of course, we have Summer Thursdays, which are starting this Thursday as part of our Break Free Blast series of events. And that Music in the Park starts this Thursday. We'll have the Prolific, which is a Motown band, starting at 7:00 p.m. And of course, we have the Farmer's Market starting on Thursday as well. So you can arrive at 3:00 p.m. That goes until 8:00 p.m. And then you can head over to Patios and Pints by the Upton House. That starts at 5:00 p.m. And then you can head back to the concert area for Music in the Park. So Summer Thursdays are going to be really exciting. We expect a lot of people coming out, considering everyone is able to do so now. We have no limitations on crowd size, which is absolutely fantastic. And I also wanted to remind everyone that our splash pad opened today. So we look forward to residents and kids taking advantage of that. Please see our website for hours, and we look forward to seeing you at Dodge Park this summer. And I also wanted to take just a few minutes to talk about water. There's a number of issues I wanted to cover this evening. First, we're entering into the dry summer months, and it looks like for the next few weeks, for sure, it'll be dry. And I wanted to remind everyone, in an effort to reduce water rate increases in our peak hour demand days, we encourage individuals to voluntarily comply with our outdoor water usage restrictions. And that's through Labor Day. So as you may recall, residents are asked to voluntarily limit outdoor water use to odd-even days based on the last number of their address. So if you have an odd number ending in your address, then you would obviously only water on odd days. I have an even number ending in my address, so I will water tomorrow, for example. Homeowners with addresses, in this case, should follow the guidelines here. Also, we ask that individuals, to the extent this is possible, now, it's really only possible if you have automated sprinkler systems, but we ask that you limit outdoor usage to non-peak times of those respective days. So that would be from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., for example, in the morning, or 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the evening. Actually, I have that wrong. Those are the hours you really should avoid. Those are the peak hours. So we ask that you water from 11:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m., to the extent you can set your sprinklers for that. So again, 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. If you don't have automatic sprinklers, we say that you be cognizant of the odd-even days. Again, if we can keep our peak day demand down, that possibly lowers rates for everyone. And that's a phenomenon that's experienced region-wide for those that are part of the Great Lakes Water Authority. And so I also wanted to take just a couple minutes to talk about water rates and the restructuring and some of the processes we have beginning this year. So if I can draw your attention to the screen, this will take me just a couple of minutes to go through. Some of this we covered during our strategic planning and our budget hearings, but I think it's good to review it just one last time as we get into the season. First, as most of you now know, the city council approved a restructuring of our water rates in general, and thousands of residents will benefit from this new rate structure by way of savings. One restructuring involves moving to an average winter consumption for sewer charges. So, for example, in the past, when you irrigated in the summer months, the sewer charge was also based on the amount of water you used. That is no longer the case now. Instead, your sewer charge will be based on your winter average consumption, which is going to result in a significant savings for many individuals across the city. It eliminates the need for those who wanted to have a second meter to eliminate those sewer charges. And this will apply to all residential customers. So those who felt they really couldn't irrigate in the past, now it's more financially affordable to do so. The benefits of the overall rate structure change significantly improves costs for low users. So 4,000 to 5,000 people will benefit from a cost decrease. And also, those who go away, the snowbirds, if you will, will no longer have to pay the minimum usage when they are away. I mentioned the irrigation penalty, if you will, so that has been eliminated through this new system vis-à-vis the average winter sewer consumption charge. So that benefits many people. It does encourage outdoor watering. So while we're encouraging outdoor watering, we want yards to look nice, of course. It creates curb appeal, increases property value, and so on. It's also mindful to be aware to water on those odd-even days. So the structure is advantageous to those who use water wisely. And I might also mention, this is a new component that we're adding with our new water meters that are going to be installed throughout the community over the next year and a half or so. We'll be introducing dynamic pricing, which means that you'll be able to use water during non-peak periods, not just for irrigation, but for other water use consumption, decreasing your water charges. And again, this will be applicable to everyone in the community. This is a feature that we have not been able to implement in the past, but with our new system, our new rate structure, and also our new technology, we will be able to do this once all the new meters are installed. And speaking of the new water meters, once they are installed, individuals will be able to check their water usage as often as they would like. It could be daily, it could be weekly, it could be monthly. But you could imagine the benefit of this. If you think there may be an unusual use of water, trying to detect why that is occurring, whether it be a leak or just some other problem in the house that may be causing it, or an individual, or visitors, and the like, you'll be able to monitor your water usage very closely with this new system, either from your iPad, your home computer, or your smartphone. And another feature that has been approved is moving to monthly billing versus quarterly billing and being able to pay online as well. Not only paying online, but also signing up for e-billing, eliminating paper, also budget billing, and other electronic transactions. So you can see, there's just a huge benefit to the new technology. I also wanted to mention, if I can show you, draw your attention to this slide. Let me first, yes, let me just point out this slide, because when we talk about monthly billing, there's the impression that rates are going up beyond the rate of inflation and sometimes double-digit rates and so on. But the reality, when we look over our rate increases over the past 14 years, for example, the average increase in water and sewer rates has been about 4% a year. Well, that's still above the Cost of Living Index. It's still below the rate that is increased each year. This is the real rate. And when I say the real rate, it's lower than the actual rate that you may see. It's lower because water consumption has decreased pretty significantly in that 14-year period of time. So the point is, if you can use less water, obviously, your real rate is going to be lower than the reported rate. And here's the result of our water and sewer rates compared to other communities. You can see that we're still very low. When you look at these 11 other communities, Sterling Heights ranks at the lowest, at $64 per month. This is in Macomb County. When we look region-wide, you can see, whoops, I'm sorry, I thought I had a more region-wide chart. But region-wide, we rank just a couple steps up, but still very low compared to other large communities throughout the region. So again, $64 a month, and that's for water and sewer. When we look at what's going on nationwide, residents throughout the country are paying, on average, $104 per month in water and sewer bills. So we are considerably lower than what's being experienced throughout the country. So I just wanted to highlight all of that. And there's another item on the agenda tonight pertaining to water and sewer rates, so I think that's just a short prelude. I won't belabor it any further on the item later on this evening. But if anyone has any questions about water and sewer rates as we go on throughout the summer months, you can feel free to call 446-CITY. Again, on irrigation bills this summer, most will see a significant decrease because sewer rates are no longer tied to outdoor irrigation. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Before we move on to the next agenda item tonight, I want to take a moment to recognize a council member, former councilwoman in the city of Sterling Heights who recently passed away. Our former councilwoman Nancy Ulrich passed away on May 24th after a battle, a lengthy battle with illness. A little bit about councilmember, councilwoman Ulrich. Nancy was elected to the Sterling Heights City Council in the '70s, and she served in that capacity until 1983. One of the distinctions she had is that, and it's a very timely one, is that during her service on city council, Nancy believed that a city like the city of Sterling Heights should have a Memorial Day parade. So beginning in 1980, she formed the first Memorial Day parade in Sterling Heights. Just yesterday, we celebrated the 41st Annual Memorial Day Parade. And although yesterday's parade was scaled back considerably due to the pandemic conditions that we are still currently in, we're going to be looking very much forward to getting back to a full Memorial Day parade next year to properly honor servicemen and women who've died in the line of combat. So as I was saying, the first parade in 1980 was formed over 40 years ago, and there were 40 groups participating in that parade. And it was planned by a committee of four Sterling Heights residents who were selected, who actually selected councilwoman Ulrich to serve as the very first parade marshal, because they said, quote, "The parade was her idea. She got the whole thing started." Leading off that first parade was the Honor Guard from the Sterling Heights Army Recruiting Center, followed by the Veterans of Foreign Wars. The following years, Nancy recruited more volunteers and even enlisted a member of the Air National Guard from Selfridge Air Base in Mount Clements, who put together the first flyover for the parade. In 1993, Ulrich was recognized by city council for her efforts in establishing the parade, which had already become an annual event. Today, we remember councilwoman Ulrich and thank her for her service to our community and her vision creating our beloved Annual Memorial Day Parade. And I can tell you that there probably isn't very much that rivals the Memorial Day Parade in terms of what it means to our community, what it means to our residents, what it means to family members who've had a loved one die that live here in the city of Sterling Heights. So we, our heart goes out to the family of councilwoman Nancy Ulrich, and we will have, in her memory and in her honor, a brief moment of silence. That will move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is an ordinance introduction. This is to consider introduction of an ordinance amending Article III, Divisions I, XI, and XII of Chapter II of the City Code of Ordinances to establish compensation for boards and commissions by means of the Annual Appropriations Ordinance. We have a presentation from our Assistant City Attorney, Don Denault Jr. Mr. Denault.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a very short ordinance presentation for you this evening. As a result of recent budget changes that were made by council, we went through the City Code, and we found a few opportunities to clean up some very antiquated and old language about how we pay our members of boards and commissions. As you probably note in the backup, the current Chapter II of the City Code outlines one, two, three, four, five, six, seven boards, eight boards, and their current rates of pay. Those were established at the most recent, in 1999. They haven't been updated in a long time. That has been done through this year's budget process, so therefore, there's no reason for these amounts or itemizations to be in Chapter II any longer. In addition, there are two other spots in Chapter II that we're cleaning up. They talk about the Board of Ordinance Appeals and the Board of Code Appeals. Those will be cleaned up as well. And all of these cleanups will just simply say now that any compensation levels deemed appropriate by council will be established by council each year in its Annual Appropriations Ordinance during the budgeting season. So with that, I'm here for any questions or issues that you may have with the ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Denault. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Mr. Nelson.
Mayor, council, I've just got a couple of questions. We've taken everything out, and now it's up to the appropriation budget to determine these pay rates. So it takes it out of the control of the people, and it puts it in the control, basically, of the city manager. I don't see any place in this, and, you know, this is the item, I don't see anything here that gives us what the new pay rates will be. We've already gone through the appropriations and the approval of the budget for next year. So I'm just wondering how that was handled in the budget. I went back and looked through it. I didn't see any increases. So I may have missed something. But the rest of the items, I'm hoping by the time you guys resolve this or approve this, that you, that a copy of what they're referring to is provided to the people, okay? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anyone else on this agenda item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Result to introduce the ordinance amending Article III, Divisions I, XI, and XII of Chapter II of the City Code of Ordinances to establish compensation for boards and commissions by means of the Annual Appropriations Ordinance.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Yanis?
No, I think we've had many discussions on the need to make sure that we attract the best talent to our boards and commissions, and I think we've come up with a good plan, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yanis. Council, Ms. Serko. Council, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Mr. Nelson.
I feel like Paul Smith last time, only wanted to get enough to talk. Consent Agenda, Item D, to purchase nine police vehicles for the Sterling Heights Police Department, total cost of $269,847. Since we're still in budget year 2021, I understand six of these will be purchased on the 2021 budget. The other three will be purchased in the 2122 budget. So what I'm asking on that is, I'm asking if it's usual procedure to do approval for something going into the next fiscal year that we're not into. Item... Put them on both sides so I can do this. Item number F, to award a bid for the purchase and installation of a fire training burn building and training course for use at the Sterling Heights Fire Department Training Tower. My question on this is, I understand, according to the backup material, that this will be installed at Station Number Two, which is a pretty far distant corner of Sterling Heights. And I don't know why we've got the burn tower in Number One, why this isn't being installed on that property. That's where all the training takes place. Item number I, to approve the temporary relocation of polling places for select precincts for the August 3rd, 2021 city primary election. I noticed there are four of them, and they're being closed, Utica Community Schools, because they're going to be doing some construction. But I just want to make sure, I'm sure everybody that's in those precincts is going to get a letter from the city clerk that their polling place is changing. And the last item is Item K, to adopt a resolution declaring June 4th, 2021 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Sterling Heights. This resolution thing has been crawling my throat for quite a while. Couple meetings ago, we had three resolutions that were under the Consent Agenda. One of them was Armenian genocide. The other one was, another one was the violence toward Asians. And the third one was for a childhood disease that if there wouldn't have been two people here to talk about it, we would have never known. It would have been zip, zip, we're gone. Consent Agenda. Last meeting, there were two items that were not on the Consent Agenda. Who spoke on those? One of them was Juneteenth, and the other one was declaring Pride Month, June as Pride Forgive me, am I wrong in the fact that when you make the resolution?
Mr. Nelson, can we hold his time for a moment? We have a question from the council. Mrs. Saroski.
I'm concerned that this, we need to deal with the current resolution, not past resolutions, at these comments. So if we could keep our, I would like to have the...
Okay, Mr. Nelson, yeah, I think your time is almost up. So if you could just tie it all in to what this has to do with today's consent agenda item on gun violence awareness.
The agenda item...
We appreciate it. Mrs. Ryska. Thank you, Mrs. Saroski.
Item K, the agenda item to adopt a resolution declaring June 4th, 2021 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Sterling Heights. And you're supposed to wear orange on that day.
Okay.
Not every one of your constituents out here is in agreement, and you're basically saying Sterling Heights is supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Your time is up. Appreciate it. On that note, why don't we have Representative from the organization come up and speak on agenda item, Consent Agenda Item K.
My name's Jean Huntin, and I'm here with the other, some of the other members of the Macomb County Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense Organization. Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense is a national organization, as many of you may know. And just a little background, on June 4th, and wear orange day, on January 29th of 2013, a young lady, a young 15-year-old lady named Hadiya Pendleton was shot to death while standing with her friends in a small park in Chicago about a mile from what was then President Barack Obama's home. The gunman opened fire on the group of students, mistaking them for members of a rival gang. The teenager had just taken part in President Obama's inauguration... The teenager had just taken part in President Obama's inauguration just nine days before. Following her death, Hadiya's friends and family encouraged people across the country to take a stand against gun violence by wearing orange on her birthday, which is June 2. Since 2013, Wear Orange has grown into a movement of those advocating for common sense gun legislation and an end to gun violence. It is now marked by activities and commemorations for the entire first weekend of June. This year, on Friday, June 4, the kickoff of National Gun Violence Awareness Weekend, we ask Sterling Heights to join cities all over the United States in proclaiming Friday, June 4, Gun Violence Awareness Day. I'm going off script right now, but I find it hard to see how anybody could not be in favor of ending gun violence. An average of 84,700 people a year are wounded by gun violence and survive, some with lasting pain and disabilities, all with lasting trauma affecting themselves and their loved ones. We wear orange not just for those we've lost, but also for those who live on with the physical and emotional scars of gun violence. We wear orange to bring awareness to the parts of ourselves we have lost to gun violence, a sense of security for us and our families, a sense of safety in public spaces, a sense of optimism about the future, for our children, for our society. Orange, the color that hunters wear when they go into the woods, a color that says, "I'm not a target. I am here. I have a voice. I'm taking a stand." We ask you, please, join us and proclaim this Friday, June 4, Wear Orange for Gun Violence Prevention Day. And if you also want to light up the halo as you have in the past. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Pamela Liedlein, and I've spoken to this board before and shared the story of my daughter, who was a victim of gun violence in 2012 after she was struck by a stray bullet in Lansing, Michigan, while she and her fiance waited for fireworks display to start. I have experienced the trauma of being a survivor of gun violence. My daughter, my other daughter, and I, and my family, and my daughter who was killed, her students at Michigan State University, she had just gotten her PhD in Biosystems Engineering, and she would have been working on this pandemic and trying to find a vaccine and a cure. That was what she did in her life, and her life was taken by gun violence. So like Jean said, I can't imagine anyone, when I hear someone talk out against this day, I think, what, are you telling me you're in favor of gun violence? We need to do something about it. And today I was listening to the news and the first words out of the mouth of the interim chief of police in Detroit today was, "We need to do something to end gun violence." That's what his goal is. And that's something we don't need in our society. It's not about gun ownership, it's about gun violence and how it affects people in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Mr. Matthews?
Good evening, mayor, council. Andrew Vanderpoel. Ma'am, I am very sorry for your loss. Gun violence is a different pandemic we've been fighting for some time in this country, and I think it's very important that we, at the very least, recognize it. So I'm very happy to see that the council tonight seems that they're on track to recognizing it officially, because recognizing something is the first step in combating the problem. So thank you for that. I would like to echo Mr. Nelson's comments about item I, that, you know, if people's polling places are being changed, that they're well advertised, let her home sometimes works. Sometimes our younger residents may not always look at the mail in a timely fashion, so maybe a social media post could help them out as well. It never hurts to cover your bases. Back to item K, as a school teacher, I'm very familiar with this topic being brought up quite frequently. And every time, it seems, you know, when you see one of the many school shootings that happen on the news, my students the next day, or it's on a weekend, on the Monday, will ask me, "Well, what would we do in this situation?" We have trainings for this all the time. And this year is my first year in a very long time teaching middle school, and it is so much shocking to me how just numb to the whole situation all the middle schoolers are. They already have it internalized. Yep, we'll, you know, throw a clipboard at the shooter, whatever, we'll go in this corner and hope they don't come in, and we'll go out this window. And to think that one really has to worry about that, and it's already internalized by the age of 13, it's kind of a shock. That's really something to think about. On a happier note, I do have a question. I don't know that anybody can answer this. And item C, being a teacher, I also run a number of school clubs. One of them is a game design club, and many of the students there are involved in their esports communities. This furniture, I don't exactly know what that entails. I didn't know this was happening actually at the community center here. I have a couple of questions. One, I don't know if it includes cleaning supplies, but I think that's usually important, depending on what furniture entails, because oftentimes the monitors and the mice and all that, they get gunked up, and it always helps to have cleaning supplies. I'm sure the people at the library would be very aware of this, so I don't know if they would consult on that, but they would know how much is needed. And the other question I would have is, is that appropriate for competitions? Because although I work in Troy, I cannot imagine Utica would mind having a little friendly match or two. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matthews. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Not, council, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight, oh, you know what? What we're going to do before we move on to the next agenda item tonight is we do have a number of members in our audience wearing orange, and we've prepared the resolution. And as we've done at the last couple of meetings, they've requested to take a picture with the city council, which would be appropriate and which I would be honored to do and present the resolution. So council, if you'd like to join me, will go down and meet the members, the audience who spoke, and take a picture. And Mr. Vanderpoel, I think it would be appropriate, without any objection, to have the halo lit orange on June 4. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, it's a consideration item. This is to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and MAPES Supervisory Employees Union. We have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, mayor. As I mentioned, we have one more item concerning our water rates and processes and so on, and that includes the creation of this position. Historically, utility services billing and customer relations have been job functions within the Treasury Division and Finance and Budget Department. Accordingly, the city treasurer is overseeing the job functions assigned to a part-time account clerk, a full-time account clerk, full-time management assistant, and full-time accountant. City's water utilities transitioning from quarterly to monthly billing for residential customers, implementing a new rate structure and new meters, as I mentioned previously. City administration is creating a new job classification entitled Utility Services Manager to oversee the new Utility Services Division within the Finance and Budget Department. This new job classification will be integral to ensuring that the new Utility Services Division achieves the following critical performance objectives. One, continued level of high quality and responsive customer service and looking for ways to continuously improve the customer experience. Two, seamless implementation of the new water rate structure. Three, successful implementation of monthly water billing. Four, implementation of paperless water billing, budget billing, and water bill auto-pay with the help of community relations. Overseeing changes to the water billing system resulting from the water meter replacement project. The Utility Services Manager position is funded in the fiscal year 2122 budget. In order to create the Utility Services Manager classification, the city was required to negotiate a memorandum of understanding with the MAPES Supervisory Employees Union, which has been approved by that bargaining unit. And with the aforementioned in mind and all the changes that are going on to the benefit of water and sewer customers, city administration is respectfully recommending mayor and council approval of the memorandum of understanding before you this evening. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Mr. Matthews?
I would just like to speak out. I know it might seem hard to some people, but it's always good when you get a memo of understanding between your labor organization and the administrative body. That is something, as a teacher, that is often difficult, especially this past year. I would like to ensure that with the app that you were mentioning before, I believe, Mr. Vanderpoel, that that person realizes that there may be people refreshing that app every five minutes to let them know what the water bills are. And I see a smile. So there may be a little more to that Utility Services Manager position, I think, than they may know, but that's all in good faith, I'm sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Anyone else on this item? Not, council, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolved to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and MAPES Supervisory Employees Union, creating the Utility Services Manager Job Classification, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign it on behalf of the city.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, yes. Just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to make sure everyone knows that this position was already put into the budget, the 2122 budget, so it is a budgeted position. I think it's really important that we have someone in place to take on all these duties. It's going to be quite an extensive program that we're instituting, so we need to have the right person in place. And I am in full support, I think, the union and administration for working together and getting this done.
Nothing further. Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Mrs. Zarco, anything?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. No, just I have to agree, and Mr. Matthew was great to point out sometimes what a job it is to get administration and unions to work together for the common good. And we're very fortunate, by the time this happens, you know, it happens, it comes before us, and we have, actually, the easy part is to approve it. So thank you all for your work in getting this done.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Anyone else, council? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider appointments to the city of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Mr. Nelson?
Yes, I have a couple of items here. First of all, I see the process has become a lot easier here, but the one thing I have to speak on in a lot of these were power of appointment issues. Once for the mayor that has the power of appointment for these boards, it should be all seven council people and not power of the mayor. Example of that was the elected officials' compensation commission with an open chair right now. I won't go into the 75% pay raises that was talked through and the 60% for the council, but I don't believe that it's the mayor that should be assigning positions to that particular board. The other ones, it takes seven, okay? Mr. Taylor cannot do anything without the approval of at least three other people on the board, so it should be changed. The other one is having multiple people on quasi-judicial boards. I believe we have two of them, BZA and the Planning Commission. Mr. Paschke, or Paschco Ujic, he's now up for being on the Planning Commission and also on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I don't know why that's needed. He has the experience in both of them, but we've always been before, until the last few years, we have been appointing people that are qualified for the position and not just friends. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anyone else on this item? Mr. Kachubski, I believe it's a state law that has us, requires us to have one member of the Planning Commission and one member of the Zoning Board of Appeals that serves in common. Is that correct?
Yes, mayor, that's correct. We do that because those boards are so tightly intertwined and a lot of the land use, that they like to have one member serve on both to act as a liaison for the other.
And we've always had one member of the Planning Commission serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and only one, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kachubski. Anyone else on this item? If not, council, okay, we have a number of appointments. Mayor Taylor? Mrs. Zarco?
Before we make the appointments, through the chair to Mr. Kachubski, if I recall, some of these appointments that are mayoral appointments are set in state statutes as well. If I remember, one of the first votes that I took when I got here 20 years ago was that there was a group that took that authority away from Mayor Nady, and we voted to put it back into the position. I think there's three or four commissions that by state statute, they're mayoral appointments. So can we clarify that, please?
Mr. Kachubski?
Yes, there are several boards. I believe the LDFA is one. The statute requires that the mayor would appoint. I believe the Brownfield is another one. I'd have to look at the other ones, but many of the ones that require the mayor's appointment is directly out of state law.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. There are two batches that we're going to go through tonight. Some have a two-step process that were started at the last city council meeting. Well, I'll take those first. First is the Planning Commission. This is a mayoral appointment. There are three nominated positions, Jeffrey Garapi, Paschco Wekai, and John Myers III. Is there a council member who would like to make those appointments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved on the advice of the mayor to appoint Jeffrey Garapi, Paschco Wekai, and John Myers III, the Planning Commission determines ending June 30, 2024, so the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Briefly, two of the people we're appointing to the Planning Commission, Paschco Wekai is the liaison, and he's chair of our ZBA. Jeffrey Garapi is currently the chair of the Planning Commission, and John Myers has served different roles, but I think he'll be a great addition to the Planning Commission. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Radke. And with regard to Mr. Wekai, he is a business owner in the city of Sterling Heights. He's a commercial property owner in the city of Sterling Heights. He's a residential property owner in the city of Sterling Heights. He operates multiple businesses in the city of Sterling Heights. He is a self-made man, an immigrant that came to the United States and has built up a... He is a self-made man, an immigrant that came to the United States and has built up quite a good life for himself by working hard and working hard in the real estate industry. And I believe, based on what I know about him, that he has a deep understanding of the real estate industry and about planning and zoning issues, and I think he's a natural fit on this board. So I thank you, Mr. Nelson, for your comments, but I'm very comfortable with the way that we're proceeding. Counsel, anybody else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Board of Ordinance Appeals I. This is a city council appointment. There were two nominations at the last city council meeting, Robert Irvin and Julie Hoff Windhorst. Is there anyone who would like to make those appointments?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to appoint Robert Irvin and Julie Hoff Windhorst to the Board of Ordinance Appeals I, to a term ending June 30, 2024. Subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No, I think that they have been, they've done well. I'd like to see them, and I think that they would be both good candidates again, so thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Board of Ordinance Appeals II. Two council appointments, to terms ending June 30, 2024, Michael Stickney and Stephen Weikai. Is there anyone on council that would like to make this appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to appoint Steve Weikai and Michael Stickney to the Board of Ordinance Appeals II, to a term ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No, I think it's also, we discussed these gentlemen, and they are very good at what they do, and I'd like to see them continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Board of Review. Two appointments. This is a council appointment, John Hages and Mona Yacine. Is there anyone who would like to make those appointments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Resolved to appoint John Hages and Mona Yacine to the Board of Review, to terms ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Zoning Board of Appeals. Two appointments, these are city council appointments, Derek D'Angelo and Paschko Weikai. Is there anyone on council who would like to make these appointments?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to appoint Derek D'Angelo and Paschko Weikai to the ZBA, to a term of, or term ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No, I think these gentlemen work very hard. They don't always agree on things, and it's nice to see that two that don't always agree are together on that same board. I think that makes it entertaining as well as very fair, and that's all I have.
Well, I love the entertainment of the ZBA as well.
It depends on your point of view.
The chair of the vice chair, too.
With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That completes those two-step process boards and commissions. We'll move on to appointments based on a one-step process, and we have a number of them tonight. The first is the Corridor Improvement Authority. This is a mayoral appointment. Robert Artemovich is seeking reappointment to a term ending June 30, 2024. Is there a council member who would put forward my nomination of Robert Artemovich for the Corridor Improvement Authority?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
On the recommendation of the mayor, resolved to appoint Robert Artemovich to the Corridor Improvement Authority, to a term ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Authority. We have two positions. One is a requested reappointment, and there are two different term-ending dates, so we'll take these separately. The first is John Myers III. Is there anyone who would make that appointment for me?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved on the advice of the mayor to appoint John Myers III to the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, to a term ending June 30, 2024, so it's the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Partial Term ending June 30, 2022. This is an open position on the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Authority. This is also, of course, a mayoral appointment, and I would appreciate it if somebody could make the appointment of Benjamin McMartin to the open term.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to appoint Benjamin McMartin to the Partial Order Development, Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Authority, partial term ending June 30, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to pass on the Elected Officials Compensation Commission for now and move on to the Ethnic Community Committee. There are four members seeking reappointment, Abbott Basal, Cosetta Elzahenny, Susan Katula, and Ichbal Singh, all to terms ending June 30, 2024. All are fabulous members of our fabulous Ethnic Community Committee, and I would request that the city council make a motion to reappoint all four of those.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to, on the recommendation of the mayor, to appoint Abbott Basal, Cosetta Elzahenny, Susan Katula, and Ichbal Singh to the Ethnic Community Committee, to a term ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Local Development Finance Authority. This is a mayoral appointment. Dominic Patris is seeking reappointment to a term ending June 30, 2025. Is there somebody who would make that appointment for me?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Resolved to appoint Dominic Patris to the Local Development Finance Authority, to the term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Chapter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Arts Commission. This is a city council appointment. There are one, two, three, four, five positions, four seeking reappointment, and one open position. We can do this either with four and one, or all five at the same time. Is there anyone on council who would like to make an appointment to the Arts Commission?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
I would like to do all five if possible.
Okay.
Resolved to appoint David Bullman, Janet Burns, Lawrence Farhat, Judith Foley, and Patrick Macholsky to the Arts Commission, to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Beautification Commission. This is a city council appointment. There are three positions, to terms ending June 30, 2024. Two members seeking reappointment and one opening. We can do it the same way as before, or break it into two motions. Counsel, is there anyone who would like to make appointments to this Beautification Commission opening?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I'm going to make all three if it's possible.
Go ahead.
Resolved to appoint Stephen Duncan, Gary Isom, and Patrick Rye to the Beautification Commission, to a term ending June 30, 2024, so it's the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Board of Code Appeals. This is a council appointment. One member seeking reappointment, Thaddeus Stanek Jr., to a term ending June 30, 2026. Counsel?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to appoint Thaddeus Stanek Jr. to the Board of Code Appeals, to a term ending June 30, 2024?
Six.
Six, thank you. Subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No, thank you.
No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Citizens Advisory Commission. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven positions. Five members seeking reappointment, two openings. These are all terms that end June 30, 2022. As previously, we can do five and two, six and one, or all seven at the same time. Counsel?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
I will do the five. Resolved to appoint Janet Bartello, Cosetta Elzahenny, Grace Pedry, Jeannie Shabath Lewis, and Sean Taylor to the Citizens Advisory Committee, to, let me see, I'm finding it. To terms ending June 30, 2022, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There are two openings remaining. Is there anyone who'd like to make appointments to the Citizens Advisory Committee, CDBG? If not, pass on that momentarily. Go on to the Election Commission. There are two members of the Election Commission that are seeking reappointment, to terms ending June 30, 2023, Wayne Davis and Joseph Niemann. Is there anyone who'd like to make that appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to appoint Wayne Davis and Joseph Niemann to the Election Commission, to a term ending June 30, 2022?
Three.
Three. Okay. Subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03, taking the oath of office within two weeks. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No.
No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Historical Commission. There are four positions, subject to city council appointment, ending June 30, 2024. Three members seeking reappointment, and there's one opening. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to appoint Nicholas Cavalli, John Connor, Douglas Harvey, and Jeffrey Horof to the Historical Commission, to a term ending June 30, 2024, so that the appointees meet the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03, taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Briefly, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that we're appointing three commissioners who've done a wonderful job, and Mr. Horof, who is a historical interpreter and guide, I think he'll be a great addition to our Historical Commission. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Library Board of Trustees. This is a council appointment, to a term ending June 30, 2024. There is one member seeking reappointment, Shirley Cozart. Is there anyone who'd like to make that appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to appoint Shirley Cozart to the Library Board of Trustees, to a term ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Solid Waste Management Commission. There are two appointments. These are council appointments, and their terms are ending June 30, 2024. Henrietta Bishuski, Bishuski and Wayne Davis seeking reappointment. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Resolved to appoint Henrietta Bishuski and Wayne Davis to the Solid Waste Management Commission, to a term ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last but not least, is the Sustainability Commission. There are two openings. This is a city council appointment. There are two different term-ending dates, so counsel, we should break these into two. Is there anyone who'd like to make one or both of them, starting with the full term?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolved to appoint Nathan Inks to the Sustainability Commission, to a term ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And next is the Partial Term for the Sustainability Commission. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to appoint Mobashir Faruki to the Sustainability Commission, to a term ending June 30, 2022, so it's the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 403 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have two boards that we skipped over. The first is the Elected Officials Compensation Commission. I'm going to handle that one second, if we could. Next is the Elected Officials, or I'm sorry, is the Citizens Advisory Commission. And the Citizens Advisory Commission, there's two open seats. I'll give one more chance for anybody to make a motion if they'd like. If not, I would entertain a motion to postpone that item to the June 15, 2021 city council meeting.
It's been moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With regard to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission, what I'd like to do is, since there's no Elected Officials Compensation Commission meeting scheduled until, what is since there's no Elected Officials Compensation Commission meeting scheduled until, what is it? Two thousand and twenty three, we've got quite a ways to go. I would be more than happy to postpone that to the December second, two thousand and twenty one city council meeting, which will be after the upcoming mayoral election and city council election, and push it off to the newly elected city council and mayor to make that recommendation. So, I would entertain a motion to postpone the Elected Officials Compensation Commission appointment to the December second, two thousand and twenty one city council meeting.
Moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda tonight. And I must say, we have made incredible progress in the last year. If you can remember back, a year ago, we were on a Zoom call, doing roll call votes for each and every one of those things. And my goodness, was that ever, what a time to be alive. Here we are, wearing no masks, back in in-person meetings, and having roll call votes, or voice votes, what a, what a, what a, a lot of progress we've made, and a reminder of that. So, that, of course, concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on to communications from citizens. So, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's city council agenda? Mr. Matthews.
Good evening, all again. I'd like to say that Sterling Heights is a distinct city. You know, it's a standout city. People look to us for a lot of role modeling. And in that respect, I think that a lot of times, you know, if you're going to be the role model, you can't always rely on other people to take the lead. You have to be proactive. You've done that when it comes to safety, sometimes through our citizens with safe streets. And sometimes, you know, we do that through other things. We do that through proclamations, or recognitions, or resolutions, or ordinances that get passed. And one thing I think that's important is, especially during Pride Month, is we should always try to ensure that our ordinances are inclusive for all of our residents, especially with regards to workplace equity, talk tonight, equity. Years ago, when I took my job as a teacher, I did it in Oakland County, partially because I could not be summarily dismissed there. Things have changed a little bit, but not necessarily because of Macomb County. And this seems like a very minor distinction for some people, but, you know, things sometimes change at the state and federal levels, and sometimes it's important to see that you have the stability and support right in your hometown. Certain groups that are much smaller, subgroups like your police fire departments, your municipal organizations, like we saw in our memo of understanding tonight, you know, they always look out to make sure that they have the equity within their own groups. We really should look to see that we have it across our city as a whole and not just look for an umbrella clause someplace above to protect everybody. I think that would be very important for us to review at some point. Something else I'd like to bring up, and I think Mayor Taylor beat me to it a little bit here, you know, we were in a very different place one year ago, but I would like to say, especially today in June, I think some of the restrictions changed just a day or two ago. Thank you for keeping us safe, really. It's a team effort, city council, you know, Andrew Vanderpoel, we have some award-winning people up here. The city, I'm sure, has a number of accolades. I know Ms. Riska has some accolades of her own. I learned tonight, Mr. Kaschubski has a number of Grill Skill Awards. That's what I learned a little earlier this evening. We did a great number of things. You know, people in this city trusted medical experts, you know, advice. They wore their masks. I didn't have to go to Kroger and see people, you know, not wearing the mask, flinging them all over the place. And it was a shock to me, because I talked to my cousin who lives out in Idaho, and it was a very different situation over there. And he's a healthcare worker over there and said, "I don't understand what's going on." But he couldn't believe that people here wore them. He said, "Are they coerced? Are they bribing people to wear them?" And I said, "No, I don't think that made it through in the budget." But, you know, people wore masks, and they social distanced, and they practiced good hygiene. And I think that's in large part because of good role modeling. So, thank you for that, all of you. And it's not just the people here tonight. It is also, you know, the Department of Public Works and all the parks and rec, and everybody in the city who makes the wheels turn. This was a tough adjustment for us this past year. You know, the Zoom calls and all the appointments, I'm sure, were difficult, but individual families had adjustments to make, and those were difficult. But to think that you've got the third or fourth biggest city in the state, one hundred and thirty-four thousand people or so, and we made it through, and I think we did a pretty good job. We leveraged our resources effectively. We had the Senior Center Clinic, which was a milestone, I think. We had the Lakeside Clinic much more recently, and we're in a very good position, and I'm feeling very positive going into the summer. I can see my ninety-three-year-old grandmother, you know, we can meet and go up north this summer, and she doesn't have to worry about coming to see me to get some groceries that I bought for her. And thank you for the privilege to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Anyone else under Communications from Citizens? We'll get you next, Mr. Jefferson. No, come on up.
Hi there, Kelly Skilin, resident Sterling Heights. I was here a couple of weeks ago and asked you all if you would be willing to reconsider an anti-discrimination ordinance for LGBTQ people, and no one answered. And so, I was wondering instead if you would be able to tell me, and maybe Mr. Vanderpoel can answer, what the status of the resident survey is, and if that is a question that could be added to the survey at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skilin. Mr. Jefferson.
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. First of all, I want to mention that DTE said today that they're going to raise the electricity prices up about one hundred and fifty percent. I'd like for people to take notice of that. So, just take notice of that. I want to agree with Mr. Matthews on some stuff. I always said that I don't understand, we have the skateboard park, why don't we have a battle between warrant-consolidated schools versus community schools, Ford versus Eisenhower, Stevenson, Utica, virus guys on the skateboards. Mayor, maybe we can judge, or Mr. Vanderpoel can judge, or something like that, but I don't, I've never seen why we didn't do that. That, I've always been a very big opponent, and I've said it several dozen times up here. I don't understand why we don't have metal detectors at the doors of the city hall over there, and why we don't have them in here to protect us from the gun violence. As I said, every once in a while, somebody does get touched in the head, and background checks just don't work out. As I said, Pookie and Ray Ray not coming up here and shooting nobody. It's going to be somebody, boyfriend, or wife, or jealous person that's going to take us out. Since this meeting is right before Juneteenth, can you tell us the, what the celebration, not, I don't want to call it celebration, what the activity is going to be around that hosted here by the city, so people can make plans to participate in that outing? And last but not least, I didn't see it on this here, this here agenda, but I'm going to put it out there. I want to make a proclamation today, or a resolution, that we recognize that the city of Sterling Heights, the residents of Sterling Heights, no longer discriminate or have hatred towards the Jews in our community. That's the flavor of what a country is now. I don't know why it's not there. Asians are there, or we there. Also make a proclamation that from now on, in Sterling Heights, there will be no group anymore recognized than any other group, than the group here in Sterling Heights. From now on, we are all one. I wouldn't call it the Linda Comer proclamation, because she was the one that came up here years ago and said, "We all want to be in the same boat." Yeah, we all want to be in the same boat. There's no more poor in Sterling Heights versus the rich, educated versus the uneducated, blacks versus whites, Jews versus Gentiles, Muslims versus Catholics, Rob Johnson versus Bob Scott, no more. We are all one group here in Sterling Heights, and we're pushing that rock up the hill.
Okay.
No more separation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Mr. Nelson.
Because the first thing is, I want to go back to the resolutions that get hidden in consent agendas. All I'm asking is that anything that takes the time and the effort of staff to write up these resolutions that get hidden are read into the record, every one of them. That means that the Armenian genocide and the violence against Asians and everything is read into the record so that it's in the minutes. There should be no reason why these resolutions are not written, read into the record. Second issue, I made sure there were no budget items. Last time I tried this, I was speaking on budget items that were being discussed. In going through both budget meetings and presentations to the council, noticed that there was no discussion from city administration going over the budget, and there was no information about the debt management or debt service program. It really looks nice in the budget to say that we only have seven million dollars' worth of debt for this year. But from page three hundred and fifty, and I tried to do this a couple of times, in compliance with the Uniform Budget Act of nineteen seventy-eight, the summary of the city's total indebtedness as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, which is twenty-nine days from now, including the principal and interest payments required for fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two, and the funding sources, is included in the debt service section. Total indebtedness is two hundred and two million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Total principal payment is eleven million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, three forty. And the interest payment is six million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty. Now, it's great, I know when you get an audit on your budget, I know that they have a certain way of doing it, but to say that your total indebtedness and in total debt maturity within ten years will be sixty-four point two percent. I like to call your current fiscal policy by now, day later, because that's what it is. We need something that's put down, and I think Mayor Taylor, you made mention of that during the budget hearings. Every time we need a road, county comes to us, wants our part, what do we do? Debt service. We put it eight years, ten years, whatever it is. The three capital improvement bonds that we had, twenty-year bonds, so it looks nice. I get a lot of comments about the parks, the building, all of that. People that own property, they have seventeen more years to pay on these parks. They have another nineteen years on the Palatial EPW building. They have another eighteen years on, what was the other building? Oh, the redoing of the, of the city buildings. Forgot to bring up that the reason that we needed that much money is because our existing buildings were falling apart. So, I think now on, that ought to be brought up, how much we are totally in debt, the revenues for all of this, and it was in the budget document.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Thank you very much.
Am I out of time?
Yep, there's a timer right there. There's a green, yellow, and red light.
Oh.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else under?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Communications?
Hi, council. I was here a couple of weeks ago. Name's Benjamin Orjata. I'm just hoping to speak again, asking for the council to do a resolution for the protection of LGBTQ rights within the city and to protect our right to be employed in the city without discrimination. And I do hope that you will take that under due consideration and as well in the near future, particularly with Pride Month. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else under Communications from Citizens? If not, I'll close that portion and go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything tonight?
Mayor, I have a few things I can follow up on, if you don't mind. First, early on, under the consent agenda, Mr. Nelson inquired about our police vehicles. There is one being purchased in the current fiscal year, using current fiscal year funding. Eight are being purchased in two thousand and twenty-two, which starts July one. All nine of these vehicles will be delivered in fiscal year twenty-two and paid in fiscal year twenty-two. Obviously, police vehicles have a long lead time, so to order them and get them in the queue is obviously a wise thing to do. The temporary polling locations will be widely publicized. In addition to direct mailing, there will also be significant social media, media advisories, information on our website and our cable channel, on our listserv, which reaches out to tens of thousands of individuals. They'll all be included in our publication. There was some confusion on Mr. Nelson's behalf regarding the Drill Tower. The ancillary building that was approved by city council tonight will be at Station Five, right next to the Drill Tower. So, this is an ancillary drill apparatus, which is definitely needed to preserve our premier status as a fire department across the nation. Couple other items to follow up on. Regarding the anti-discrimination ordinance, the city has revised all of our internal policies and procedures to include anti-discrimination ordinance language, including prohibiting any sort of discrimination, including sexual orientation discrimination. And we encourage, still continue to encourage the state to take action on behalf of the entire state on the Elliot Larson's Act to ensure that there is no anti-discrimination, that there's no discrimination of any sort, including sexual orientation and any other imaginable discrimination. Mr. Jefferson inquired about metal detectors. While it sounds like a good idea, and he and I have talked about this in the past, the reality is that we have two officers here, we're in good hands at every meeting, they are on alert and able to take any action that's appropriate, and we're glad to have them. Juneteenth activities are coming up. I'm pleased to announce that the African-American Coalition will have a table at the Cultural Exchange on June eighteenth. They will be highlighting the city council's approval of the Juneteenth resolution. That will be blown up and put on an easel for all the thousands of people that attend the Cultural Exchange to see the proactive action that the city council is taking and continuing to recognize this very important date in African-American history. I also want to do comment on the case of Mr. Nelson saying the resolutions should not be on consent. I want to remind the audience that just because something is on consent doesn't mean there's any less material. In fact, the exact same amount of material, all the backup information on consent, is very similar to any other agenda item. Any resident can see it and look at it, review it electronically on our e-Packet with any sort of internet connection, or they can visit the clerk's office if they don't have internet, and you can review the resolutions, and they are made part of the public record. I want to comment some on our total debt. Mr. Nelson mentioned that he thought we're very high on our debt, and that's actually contrary to the facts of the city. In fact, we have one of our lowest debt rate since nineteen eighty-nine. I want to read some of our financial achievements that have been implemented. Now, the city is continuing to fully fund our long-term liabilities while reducing and eliminating legacy costs. We've increased retiree healthcare trust fund assets from six million in two thousand and four to now almost a hundred and fifty million in two thousand and twenty-one. Six million in two thousand and four to over a hundred and fifty million in two thousand and twenty-one. Our fund balance is still solid, almost at twenty-five percent. We continue to remain, have one of the lowest tax rates in all full-service cities in Macomb County, one of the lowest across the state. We've obtained the highest audit score possible, and of course, the independent auditors look at outstanding debt as well, continuing our long history of financial reporting excellence. We've continued to receive the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for decades now, one of the longest continuous runs of that award. We, as you heard earlier, we continue to offer, have one of the lowest water and sewer rates in southeastern Michigan. The city continues to maintain an excellent double-A credit rating, which is quite commendable. And one of our rating agencies, Standard and Poor's, I'm sure many of you have heard about Standard and Poor's, they're sort of the gold star standard for rating outstanding debt and the like. And this is a quote from them, from their financial report on Sterling Heights this past year, and I'll read this verbatim. "The city's tax base is expansive and diverse and has exhibited moderate growth in recent years. This is in combination with strong financial management and has contributed to a solid financial position." So the comment that, you know, we have an excessive amount of outstanding debt does not align with the facts and figures of our budget and what independent experts are saying about the city's financial position. And I think that covers it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Kuszczyk, anything tonight?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Counsel, I'll open it up for new business reports. Anything tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment briefly on the, the indebtedness of the city, which isn't that great, but there were some comments that one of the people in the audience made that I think need to be addressed. Essentially, some cities pay for everything in cash. That's one way to do business. Shelby Township is very proud that they do things this way. I think that that's awfully foolish. When you go out for your home, when you buy, you get a mortgage, you get to live in your home while you pay that mortgage off. You get full use of the building. So yes, you borrow money now to pay a little bit more later, but right now, we are in one of the lowest interest rate environments in history. Our public debt is coming back at some of the lowest rates ever. We're essentially paying almost nothing for the full use of a building like the DPW. Because if we were to save up all that money to buy a DPW, maybe we wouldn't buy it for fifteen, twenty years. Well, the building continues to deteriorate. We continue to spend extra money on excessive maintenance and issues there. I mean, there was a point, I make this up a lot because it was just insane to me, the, the building had separated, and someone sitting inside could like talk to someone outside the building and see them fully. And we're asking our staff to work in that building. And I think that if we're asking our staff, they had to wear full winter coats because it was freezing, it doesn't make sense. That's not the right way to do business. And in an environment where we can leverage, that's what the word is, is leverage. Some people think it's a bad term, but when you buy a car with a loan, you're using leverage. When you can buy the car and use it now and then pay for it as you go, yes, and you might pay a little bit less, but our public debt, and forgive me if I don't remember this properly, is very low, our interest rate is very low, Mr. Vanderpoel, and we can then use, fully use the building and give the residents the services that they expect. So to me, that's the smart way to do business. We pay for it at a very low rate over time, we get full use of the property, and we provide service to the residents. Otherwise, yeah, we could wait twenty, thirty years, when I think this entire council would not be here anymore, and we could have a new DPW building, we could pay for it cash. But I guess, why don't you buy your house in cash? Why don't you pay for a car in cash? Almost no one does this, because they understand the power of a mortgage, the power of leverage to help you pay over the long term for a very steep expense in the short term. That's why we do it this way. And I think whenever someone attacks public debt, we have very low public debt in Sterling Heights, I just have to believe that they don't really understand the issue, or they want to make hay about what they consider to be a high debt level. Well, if you bought your house, your house in Sterling Heights now, they go for two-hundred-and-eighty, three-hundred thousand dollars, technically, you're in debt three-hundred thousand dollars. You're in a lot of debt, but with a mortgage over twenty years, you're going to pay, or thirty years, you're going to pay off that debt, and you don't really feel the pinch, per se, because you're paying it off over a longer period of time. So that's all I have to say about that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. There's a couple of things that were mentioned tonight, and, and I'm gonna, I think I'd like to stick with the positive. This last year has been, it's been one that we'll all remember. I can remember in March of twenty twenty, when we talked about this pandemic lasting at least a year, maybe eighteen months. You know, little did we think we'd actually live through it and count those days down, but I think we've been so successful here in the city for many reasons, and it's the leadership that we had from both administration and the council with, in conjunction with all of our residents. Like we can say, employees, our business owners, industrial and manufacturing workforce all played a part in where we're at today. So I think we all should be patting ourselves on the back, because we've reached a point that we're sitting here without masks, and hopefully, we're all going to be healthy as we get through the rest of the year. Some of the millages that were brought up tonight, they were voter-approved. So we gave people a choice as to how they wanted to spend their money. So needless to say, those are going to be enacted because the residents, the voters, decided this is how they wanted to spend their money. And probably the ones that we remember the most are the safe streets and certainly the parks. And the investment that we have made in the park system certainly has paid off for individuals as well. The second most popular zip code in southeast Michigan is four-eight-three-one-three, and that's right here. So when you look at real estate listings, it's not uncommon to see a house in this zip code and know that, in addition to that, they're using our stock photos of the farmer's market, of the splash pad, of the amphitheater. They're using those to sell homes for individuals. So I think it was a good investment on all of our parts. The other thing, and this is through the chair, the lastly, is through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. I know that we had discussed having vaccinations available for people that haven't had them yet at the farmer's market, and I know we, I think we had like three specific Thursdays. Could you tell me if that's still the plan, or has that plan changed?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, thank you for the reminder. We will be providing vaccinations starting this Thursday at Music in the Park. So look for the mobile command unit. It'll be parked over by the splash pad. Anyone using the park, you don't have to be going just to Music in the Park. You can stop by and get a vaccination. Our hope is that individuals will, will participate, especially being so easy. You don't have to make an appointment, you're right there, it's quick. We have our highly skilled, talented paramedics that will be administering the vaccines. All the electronic equipment will be on site, so we encourage people to take advantage of it beginning this Thursday.
Will there be any incentives involved if you do get a vaccination?
Uh, ye- yes, I believe you will get a free beer coupon for patios and pints. I hope there's no doctors in the room, but yes, you can then walk over across the street and partake in patios and pints, so we're looking forward to that. Hopefully, that's a small incentive, but we're looking at some other incentives as well. Thank you.
And lastly, one more thing is, in the news, we've listened to the, the Tulsa massacre that happened a hundred years ago. I would like that, some kind of programming done about the massacre during Black History Month, whether we get the documentary, but I think it's something that we're all learning about now, that we didn't know the, the actual effects that it had on the people that lived there. So I think that would be a good addition to Black History Month. And nothing further.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Zarco.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. I just wanted to make mention, yesterday was Memorial Day, and we had a beautiful ceremony here at City Hall unveiling the new location in the memorial garden setting for all our veterans' memorials and benches. And I have to say that listening to our grand marshal, Sharon Allen, who served twenty years in the military and has served probably more than twenty years to the residents of Sterling Heights on various boards and commissions, very dedicated lady, gave the most humbling and educating speech about Memorial Day and what it really is all about, not the barbecues, it's about those that didn't return, and, and it's really a day of mourning. And I, I just need to thank her for her words. They really hit home, they hit, hit my heart, and I thank her for all of her service over the years. And also, I wanted to make mention that just tonight, before we came here, we unveiled the new police memorial mural on the front of the police station, and along the bottom are the names of our three fallen officers, as well as tiles that were actually made down at the Detroit Institute of Arts by the police officers and their families to be placed under this mural. Once again, another humbling memorial to those that have given the ultimate sacrifice for the residents of our city. So when you get a chance, you really can't miss it if you come to the front parking lot by the library in the police station. It's a beautiful tribute, and I hope and pray we never have to add another name to it. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koszki.
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Do we still post the city activities on our website as an example? Takeout Tuesday, farmer's market on Thursday, Cultural Exchange coming up on the eighteenth, where it takes place, like the farmer's market? Do we put that out there so that a resident could click on there and see what activities are coming up?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Koszki, that is an excellent question. In fact, I use it almost daily. You can go to our website, click on the calendar on our website, it's very easy to access, and you can pull up any day, any month, and get a listing of activities for that desired date you're looking at. So for example, today was Takeout Tuesday, activities are listed there, the activities for Music in the Park, any day. We have so many activities going on, it's hard to keep them all straight, but our calendar is a great resource. It's all electronic, you can sort it by month, you can sort it by activity, you can print it out, it's really cool. So go to our website, click on calendar, that'll do it.
Are we still restricting activities to residents? What, where do we welcome non-residents?
Well, that's another good question. We, we are restricting as we reopen. For example, today was the first day of opening for the splash pad. Normally, we allow non-residents, we of course charge a fee, and we make a couple hundred thousand dollars a year on the non-resident fee. But we're starting out this year with residents only, because we want to see what sort of usage there is. We expect there's going to be high demand, especially with everyone having been locked up inside for the last year and a half, so we want to reserve activities like that for residents to see how it goes, and then we can slowly reopen that back up to non-residents. But there are other activities across the city that we allow non-residents to. Of course, our signature event, Sterling Fest, which is Oktoberfest this year, our dog park and, and the like, but we do have higher non-resident fees.
And all that information will be on the website also, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Koszki. Anyone else, counsel?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you. So as most of you probably do know, yesterday was Memorial Day, and that is always a very important day to me. I've had the pleasure and honor of being married to a retired major in the United States Air Force, and we have a son who is now being promoted on Thursday to major at the young age of thirty-two in the United States Marine Corps. So I will be missing Music in the Park, and I will ask that you all dance for me and in, in place of me, because that is one of my favorite things in the world, is music in the park. I'm a musician at church, but still, it's a musician, and I really enjoy the music, and I'm, I'm so glad that we can get back to this semblance of what I call the old normal. I don't want to hear the word new normal, that phrase ever again. The old normal is what we're looking for, so I'm very happy to see that, and I'm very glad that we're able to do that. So I do want to ask, speaking of pints and, and, and patios and the immunization, so you did say that the, those that were getting immunized could also get the incentive of a ticket for a pint or patio, correct? Mr. Vanderpoel?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem Sarowski, I'm not sure if it's exactly a pint, but yes, certainly, they will get a beverage.
Perfect. But what age, because how, what are our age limits that we're immunizing for? Just letting that be clear to the residents.
Uh, whatever age limits are now authorized by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, which is now, you know, just about every category, I think, other, well, don't quote me on it, so you'd have to look at that category, but we'll clarify that on our social media.
Okay, yeah, because they're, they at least are sixteen and up, if not younger now, so. So I just wanted to make that quite clear, that there will be an age limit for those coupons. And then fin- or not finally, but I did want to echo Mrs. Schmidt's mentioning of that veterans' memorial. It is beautiful. It has the benches, they're also going, we are also going to be putting in tables with, like picnic tables with umbrellas, so that the, both the staff, residents can go eat lunch, spend some time in just reflection, and it's, it's really, it's something to see. I know the gentleman that made many of those memorials, Michael Dregna, he has passed, but he was a dear friend of our families and a really very, very talented, very talented sculptor with those monuments. And to see this come to fruition, I, I just, I would, I'm just so proud that his, his initial vision has gotten to where it is today, and it's just beautiful. And finally, so resolutions, and the resolutions that we make as, as a city are not meant to exclude, but they are meant to draw attention to some of the opportunities where we can highlight our inclusiveness and some of the other things, our vibrancy, our inclusiveness, our, the, the city that we want to be. And so when we highlight a special, a childhood illness, or a mother's group of people, or people who've had gun violence, it's not to say, I love, I think guns are fantastic, my family loves to shoot guns, but not at people. So the gun violence is important. So we, we have to take the opportunities that we can, help, it's, it's almost a pat on the back, but it's not just meant to be a cursory pat on the back, it's also to draw attention to things that are truly important. It doesn't have to be important to everyone. Mayor Taylor mentioned today, that mural, art is in the eye of the beholder. Some of these resolutions are not going to resolve or resonate with everybody, but they are for those that are feeling displaced, marginalized, to let them know that we are trying to prevent the further propagation of that marginalization. So please understand that we, we aren't going to totally make everything vanilla and have a resolution for every single part, group, but those that are definitely showing need, we would, it's, it's a, it's a good thing. And so I'm just very happy to say that we are, I think that we are going in the right direction. And that's all I have to say, Mayor Taylor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Sarowski, and congratulations to Major, soon-to-be Major Sarowski. The Sarowskis have, they are a family of public servants, I will say that, and I'm proud to serve with you, Mayor Protem Sarowski, and your sons are also a reflection on you and your husband, so very well done. I want to, a lot of the things I wanted to say were very well said by Mayor Protem, by Mrs. Zarco, by Mrs. Schmidt, so I'm not even sure where I am, and even Mr. Radke, so I don't have much to say, thankfully. So, but one thing I do want to bring up is, is this. I was contacted recently by a business owner in the city who has a salon, and she's got an interesting concept, which is, she owns the salon, but she rents out the, she calls them lofts, she rents out the lofts to the, to the stylists. And she would like to expand her business to allow for things like, instead of just hair and nail, and I'm not sure if she does nail, but certainly they do hairstyling, she wants massage and microblading, which I must admit, I'm not really aware or sure what microblading actually is, but I know it is, I, I mean, I know it has to do with your eyebrows, but I'm not, I, I just don't, I just don't know what it is. I'm going to be honest, I don't know. But here's the issue. So she has these lofts, or she has these, these chairs, she basically rents out the chairs, she'd like to have a massage therapist there, she'd like to have a, a microblader there. Microblading will require a change in her zoning, because that's technically body art, okay? So she'll have to go through the zoning board, I believe, to get a zoning, a variance for that. Okay. She doesn't need a zoning change, I don't think, she probably needs a variance, but we can work that out. Or she can work that out with the city and make, make sure she gets the application for what she needs. The issue is this, for microblading, the stylist would have to be, or whatever, the microblader would have to be done by, say, nine P.M., either eight P.M. or nine P.M. And if she has massage therapists there, they would have to be done by eight P.M. or nine P.M. It's one, it's one or the other. And the way our ordinance reads right now is that if you have a massage therapist, or if you have massage in the, in the building, then the whole operation has to shut down by eight, which would mean, or nine, I can't remember, it's eight or nine. And the problem is, she doesn't want her, her stylists to stop working at eight o'clock. The stylists want to keep working until, you know, ten or whatever time they're permitted to. But the way our ordinance reads right now, if you have massage, or if you have microblading, those uses with the more restrictive time limit would restrict every use in the same building to those time limits. So I would like, without So, I would like, without objection from the council, I would like to ask the city administration to bring forward an ordinance that sort of modernizes that, that if you have these multiple different uses in the same building, that, if microblading has to end by 8:00, let the microblading end at 8:00, but let the hairstylist keep going until 10:00, or whatever they normally would go. If the massage has to end at 8:00 or 9:00, let that end at 8:00 or 9:00, but let everything else that's permitted to keep going. So, basically, what I'm asking is that we reduce the regulation on the entire building and keep the regulation as to that specific use, but allow other uses in the same building to continue on past that. So, of course, I'm not asking for you to support that. I'm just asking for you right now to allow the city administration to research it and determine whether it would be a best practice to reduce that restriction on that business, and not just that business, but really any business, because I imagine, you know, that's the way the world is going, I think, is that you're having multiple uses in the same, a sort of on-demand, on-demand services. So, I would like to see that. Anybody have any objection to that?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
If you're going to request something like that, then I would also request that administration contacts local salons to find out what time they close. I'm a licensed cosmetologist. I worked for a salon in Clausen. I never worked till 8:00 at night. Monday off, Tuesday through Saturday. A lot of Saturdays, we closed at 2:00. I never worked until 8:00 at night. So, I would like to know what beauty salons or salons that do hair until 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night.
Yeah, I don't know, because, you know, I go to Bo Ricks, or I just have my wife cut my hair, as you can probably tell.
I'd be more than happy to cut your hair.
I don't probably do it.
No spray razor.
I don't shave either.
You have to remember, I have three sons. They had the shortest hair you ever saw.
So, I can tell you just what she told me, which is that I believe our ordinance allows the stylist to be there late, and some prefer to work late. You know, for, she does, her concern is that if she gets microblading, or if she gets massage, that she can't afford to have the hairstylist shut down at 8:00 at night.
Well, if her hairstylist work past 8:00 at night, that's where her money is, because she's going to be picking up a percentage of their take, or whatever she has set out with them.
Right. And I'm sure, you know, I would like, I would appreciate that information, because I don't know what our ordinance provides off the top of my head for hairstylists, if there's specific hours that they have to be, you know, if they must close by a certain time. But I do know that the microblading and the massage, or body art and massage, have a specific hard end time. And they, and again, she's willing to comply with that, but she asked that it just be applied to the specific, you know, service that it applies to.
Well, I would like to see what's the use today. If salons are doing microblading, and if they're doing massages, I would like to know what their hours are, what other cities are doing. I want a complete report, because I'm not too crazy about microblading in a beauty salon. I know all of them do massages, but those massages are done within the typical hours, so.
Yeah, understood. I have no issue with that. Mrs. Zarco?
I too, still have my license from LARA. We get together every two years to renew. And I'm going to have to agree with some of the things that Mrs. Kosky said. First of all, it's, this owner is saying that she wants to stay open to certain hours, but also, and it might be to serve her clientele, I'm not going to say that it's not, but I'm not saying her employees want to stay there that late, which is another thing, because if you come in early in the morning and you're doing this all day, you certainly don't want to be putting in 10-hour days. I do know that most salons now have late nights, but not every night, which might be another way we can get around this, where it might be two nights a week. So, those are things that are of norm, is what I could say, about how a salon is operated. And also, they might be renting space, so that would make a difference in how people are paid, and it would depend on whoever's doing this microblading, whether they're renting, or whether it's on commission. So, those are things to look, and each case would be different. I would like to know if it's just one salon that's asking for this particular exemption, or if there's numerous salons out there that are finding the same problem. Because I don't think we need, I mean, I'll listen to whatever administration finds, but I'm not in favor of changing an ordinance for just one party.
Agreed.
Is that, I mean, that's about as clear as I can make it.
That's fair. And in full disclosure, I mean, it's not like I've been contacted by multiple different salons, but I would say whatever we do would not be specifically tailored to one business. It would be, you know, it would benefit, benefit all of them. And I think, the way it was described to me is that the owner of this business owns or leases the space, and then subleases chairs to the stylist. So, the stylists are their own entity and their own business. So, they work whatever hours they want to work. She's not like dictating, "You have to be here." So, they work whenever they have customers that they can, they can build in, and she thinks it would be a benefit to the business to offer different, kind of diversify the services and not just have hair, but also have these other services. But I think probably, and my point in this is that probably when the ordinance was set up, the idea of a body art facility was a tattoo parlor. And so, you know, you didn't want a tattoo parlor to be open all night. It's sort of like a less desirable business, probably, and so I understand the need to more heavily regulate it. But this is a hybrid where it's not like it's going to be some seedy tattoo parlor, it's going to be.
Not the tattoo parlor's are seedy.
No, it's right. It's going to be, it's going to be a salon that just happens to do this microblading, which frankly, I don't know what the difference is between microblading and tattoo. Again, I got to do some research on that. Perhaps you could, perhaps the Mayor Protem could help me out with that. Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I spoke to this business owner myself, and it wasn't just that it had to be extended the hours in the evening, but her entire business could not open until 11:00 AM, because the tattoo ordinance says that, the body art ordinance, excuse me, says that a body art facility cannot open before 11:00 AM. And if you read the newspapers, just recently, St. Clair Shores completely updated and modified their body art ordinance, because it doesn't make sense in the present day. I think the councils before us had an idea of tattooing that is not in sync with how society views it today. I think we should rewrite our entire tattooing ordinance or body art ordinance, because the idea that a tattoo parlor shouldn't be open between 8:00 AM and 11:00 AM, it doesn't make much sense to me. And especially when I read in the Atlantic Magazine that over 25% of Americans have at least one tattoo. So, one quarter of all Americans have a tattoo. This has gone mainstream. This is not like a bunch of Hells Angels in the back of a, back of a bar, you know, doing a tattoo. These are professional people who are artistic, who have very good, I mean, I can't draw, so I'm not the wrong person for it. But I think that we should definitely look into best practices today, and I'd say we should look at the entire body art ordinance, including hours other communities are doing and distances, and the kind of shopping center they can be located in. Because we have several body art facilities in Sterling Heights, and I, in stepping on council, I've never received one complaint about any of them. And I don't know why, I know that we've been denying them through the ZBA, because they haven't met our ordinance requirements, and I'm wondering if maybe our ordinance requirements are a little too stringent. And I want to just have a whole, all the information so that we can really get to the bottom of it, and hopefully assist our local business owners to do a business that obviously 25% of Americans have partaken. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. So, you asked for two things. Initially, you said you want to tweak the ordinance, and then you said you wanted information, so.
Yeah, you want me to, if I could clarify, at this point, I really would just like the city administration to prepare a report that identifies what the issues are here, what would have to be done in order to accommodate this business specifically, and if it would need to be an ordinance change, what exactly. So, I'm not, I'm not asking them to bring back an ordinance change right now. I'm asking for an informational report that could then be, potentially turn into an ordinance change.
Okay, because initially, you said.
Yeah, my mistake.
Okay. And then through the chair to Mr. Kachubski. Mr. Kachubski, for this one business, is this something that could be handled with a variance? Mr. Kachubski?
Yes. To be honest, they could apply for a zoning variance or a special use for the various things they want to do. I will point out that microblading is state, the state considers that tattooing, so that's something that we have to be cognizant of as well.
Okay. So, it is something that this, if this one business is having this issue, that they could go before the BZA and ask for a variance?
They could ask for variance on size, location, yes.
Okay. Okay.
So, I understand that. I think the problem with that is, do you know if they've already done that, Mr. Kachubski?
I don't know.
They did.
They did.
The problem with applying for a variance is that, it's hard to get a variance, you have to show that, you know, that you really don't have any way to use the property, and it's not something that's self-created. So, you, there's a hard, you got to show hardship, okay? So, I'm not sure that they'd be a great candidate for a variance for like the hours. So, but, you know, this, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, and I did that, and I really just want to know the landscape here, all right? What are we dealing with, so that then we can make an informed decision about whether or not a variance change could happen? Anybody, anybody else? Mrs. Zarco?
Yes. Mayor, thank you, Mayor Taylor. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. I really want to know how many tattoo salons, parlors, whatever you want to call them, we have in the city. Because I believe when the ordinance was created, it was for the first one that was on Van Dyke, just north of 14, and I believe that's closed. So, I want to know, this ordinance that we have in place, how many, how many places can you get a tattoo in Sterling Heights? It's probably, that's what I'm asking. Nothing further.
Okay. Do you have, do you think you have sufficient information to provide a report that addresses my concerns and everyone else's?
Yes, Mayor, I believe so. The only thing I would ask, after conferring with the city attorney, I think it would be good to have probably, you know, to do this level of research, if it's possible, 90 days to report back to council, if that sounds reasonable to council.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, excuse me, I don't think that's unreasonable. That's fine with me. Anything else on that? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Couple other things, briefly, you know, I think, Mr. Vanderpoel, you did a very good job explaining our city operations and our, how we manage our budget here, and I think, Mr. Radke did, I was going to mention, you know, it's very common, I love when people say, "I wish the city would operate like a business." Well, every one of my business clients knows the value of using debt in order to finance operations if necessary, to take on capital expenditures, to improve their buildings, to provide better service to their customers. And I'm very comfortable with our low level of debt, that we're getting very good value out of it, that, you know, that we're getting, you know, a DPW building that's not some palace, it's a functional garage, for lack of a better term. You know, it's a, it's a place where men and women work hard fixing our fleet vehicles, fixing our police vehicles, fixing our ambulances, and they're doing it in a comfortable space now. They're doing it in a way, in an area where they can get the training that they need. And I appreciate, Mr. Nelson, your newfound interest in our city operations, in our city finances, in our city budget, but, you know, we've been doing these things for a number of years now. You know, we discussed the DPW building years ago. We discussed redoing all of our city campus buildings, you know, years ago. And so, we already had those debates. We already had those discussions, and I'm very comfortable with the decisions that we made, and I'm very comfortable with the process that we had to make those decisions. Those decisions were made with a lot of public input, okay? And here you are criticizing them years after the fact. Doesn't seem like a coincidence to me. The last thing I want to mention is this. Ms. Gillan and Mr. Orchata, I believe, sorry if I mispronounced your name. I don't want your comments to go unrecognized for two meetings in a row. I appreciate the questions, and I appreciate you bringing it up. In 2014, the city council passed a nondiscrimination ordinance. There were a lot of accusations about what that nondiscrimination ordinance was and wasn't. What it was, was an attempt to show our community that you cannot be fired, you cannot be denied service based on your sexual orientation. It seems to me a fundamental principle. It seems to me to be the most conservative principle that we could ask for, which is that the government, and that businesses, and that in housing, you cannot be discriminated based on who you love. That's it. It's a simple concept. And why anyone would think we need to allow for that, why anyone would think, you know what, I want to have the ability to say, "I'm not going to rent you that apartment if I don't like who you're sleeping with," is absurd to me. I supported that ordinance. I put my heart and soul into that ordinance, and I was heartbroken when I saw people that used it, I mean, people were out on the city, the library steps, confusing people about that, and it just breaks my heart, what a shame it was, what happened there. And I have said that I will support it again. I would support it again. I would vote yes on it right now. I wrote the ordinance myself, practically. I would do it again, right now, and I would vote yes on it if it was in front of me right now. It's the right thing to do, and I support it, and I hope that we can, as far as I know, I'm not sure if there's any other Macomb County city that's passed one, it's been almost seven years to the day that we passed that ordinance, and it's, it's high time that the state of Michigan does something about it. It's time that the federal government does something about it, but if they're not going to do anything, I say we do it. Counsel, that's all I have for tonight.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Two things that you brought up. First of all, the ordinance. I can tell you, it was June 17, 2014. And the reason why I remember that is because that morning, I buried my husband. And that was such an important issue that I made sure that I was sitting in this chair that night, and I brought all my relatives that were still at my house that evening, morning with me, to make sure I was here to vote on that ordinance. So, yes, it is important. And as, we had to rescind it. The reason why we had to rescind it isn't because we didn't want it, it was that there were enough people that signed it that wanted to vote on it, and you can't vote on an ordinance. So, we had to rescind it, because if you, you just don't vote on an ordinance, because every time you change it, you have to go back to the people to change the ordinance. So, most of us sitting here, we're here when we passed it. If this was something that, trust me, I remember. I mean, I remember the hatred in the room that night, and the people, when you looked out into the crowd and the judgmental people, it was, first of all, it was sickening. It broke my heart to see humanity in that state, to talk about, they just couldn't understand another person. You know, so many times, we don't agree with people, but we accept them for who they are. And other times, we don't agree with them, we don't talk to them, because it's easier. But that night, it was overwhelming, the people that came up, one after the other after the other, that criticized somebody's lifestyle. And I don't want anybody to judge me, so I'm not judging anybody else. I might not understand all of this, but I don't have to. So, I couldn't agree more with the mayor when it comes to this particular issue. And really, the people that were coming up were calling themselves Christians. If you really believed in that, you wouldn't be saying some of the things that you were. If you really believed in that, you wouldn't be saying some of the things that you were. Because we all come from the same place, if you really believe in Christianity. So the other thing is government is not a business. When you have a business, you have a specific demographic. This person needs nuts and bolts, and somebody might need pancakes, and somebody else might need bicycles. So you have a focus on that demographic. Government is a service. Government is for everybody. We serve everybody, whether you agree with the way we do it or not. Government is for everyone. Nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke, briefly.
Briefly, I fully support your comments on the LGBTQ ordinance. I'd vote in support of it if it was put in front of me today. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I will say this, and I don't care if it's gamesmanship or not, I actually wouldn't vote on it right now. I would wait until it gets cold, because the people stood outside, and I saw it with my own eyes. They stood outside, and they said, we want, and somebody said to me, oh, I signed that petition at the library to support your LGBTQ ordinance. I said, no, you signed a petition to withdraw it. We already passed it. She said, what do you mean? I said, what you signed was a petition to remove it from the law. It's already the law, and you, and she was mortified. She was shocked. So I don't care if it's gamesmanship or not. It's going to be a heck of a lot harder to collect the 5, 6, 7,000 signatures in the freezing cold. And so if the people opposed to this ordinance want to do it again, I'm not going to give them June, July, and August to go collect the signatures. You're going to do it in January, February, December, January, and February. That's what I have to say. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, with no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.